Okay, good. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. If I call this meeting to order, if everyone please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to thank all of Madison Township, your supervisors, supervisors Erin, Andrew, and Phil, Town Secretary Doreen Salt, and the Town Solicitor Joel. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the reading of the last minutes.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Okay, thank you. Resolution 220196.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers 344-843-345-4324, inclusive, totaling $3,594,604.27. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $5,078,082.10. Adopted at regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220189.
Approving a provider for the Office of Drug and Alcohol, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the service provider, Avenue's Recovery Medical Center at Valley Forge. For the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna Susquehanna's Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the fiscal year 2022 through 2023, as attached here too, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Drugs and Alcohol, Ms. Barbara Durkin.
Good morning, Barbara.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm simply here to request your support for my office entering into a provider contract with Avenue's Recovery Center. This is a hospital-based treatment facility for individuals who are medically compromised but obviously need treatment for their substance use disorder. We simply forgot this when we went through the normal provider process. There's nothing out of the ordinary with this. All of our funds come from the state to the county, so it won't cost the county any additional dollars to add this provider into network. Are there any questions?
No questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Resolution 220190.
Approving the submission of a multimodal transportation grant application for the Lackawanna River Trail Bridge, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is interested in pursuing and promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County and does hereby approve the submission and ratify the filing of the multimodal transportation grant application to support the Lackawanna River Trail Bridge to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $253,286 to be used specifically to design and engineering in the development of the Lackawanna River Trail Bridge project in Scranton, PA. And whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this multimodal transportation grant project, and now therefore be it resolved that this, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, is hereby approve the submission of this application to the multimodal transportation grant program adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution states that the county is approving and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the multimodal transportation grant program in the amount of $253,286 to be used for the design and engineering and the development of the Lackawanna River Trail Bridge project in Scranton, PA.
Questions?
Where is it? Which one?
It is, do you know where LHVA headquarters is and where the trail is at that point?
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's a bridge that would connect the trail over to the potential Boomerang Park that we are looking to acquire from UGI.
That'll be quite a park when it's completed.
Absolutely, and we're moving forward with that initiative, so yes, absolutely.
Some things take some time, there's no question.
Especially since the property for UGI needs remediation, so that has to be completed first.
It shouldn't cost the county any money either.
Correct.
That's a great thing. All right, anyone have any questions for Brenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution 220191.
Approving the submission of a multimodal transportation grant application for the Blakely Main Avenue Rehabilitation Project, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is interested in pursuing and promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County and does hereby approve the submission and ratify the following, filing of the multimodal transportation grant application for the Blakely Main Avenue Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $1,179,430 to renovate and construct new sidewalks, purchase and install appropriate lighting, create ADA curb cuts, and create a new linkage to the Lackawanna Heritage Trail. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this multimodal transportation grant project, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby approve the submission of this application to the multimodal transportation grant program adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Sacco.
Again, this is another application to the same program through DCED's multimodal transportation grant program, and this is for our county-owned Blakely Main Avenue Rehabilitation Project. We had received grant funding in the past. Unfortunately, a lot of the costs have gone up, so we're requesting additional funds to complete the project.
Good. All right, anybody have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 220192.
Approving the submission of a multimodal transportation grant application for the Clifton Township Plank Road Bridge Replacement Project, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is interested in pursuing and promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and does hereby approve the submission and ratify the filing of a multimodal transportation grant application for the Clifton Township Plank Road Bridge Number One Replacement Project in the amount of $1,595,500 to be used for the replacement and all related work for Bridge One, T304 Plank Road, Clifton Township, PA. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to this multimodal transportation grant project, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby approve the submission of this application to the multimodal transportation grant program adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
Another grant application through the multimodal transportation grant program. This is for a county-owned bridge in Clifton Township, Plank Road. This is the same bridge that we have the temporary bridge on, so we're seeking funds to actually replace the bridge.
Okay, well, this is a bridge that we, a temporary bridge that Lackawanna County purchased to make it so it was passable for the people up there to continue to use it. And now we're going to try to, you know, get the money to-
Correct.
-to replace the bridge. 156 bridges in Lackawanna County, they're expensive, you know, it's hard to do, so we need the grants. Anyone have questions for Brenda?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Brian Jeffers, is that the, that was the bridge that we purchased, the temporary?
Yes.
We actually purchased this at least-
Right, so now we can take that bridge and use it somewhere else.
Someplace else. Okay, resolution 220193.
Take a vote, huh? Didn't take a vote?
Did we take a vote?
I don't think we did.
Did we take a vote?
Oh, okay. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we did.
Yeah, I thought we did too. Okay, resolution 220193.
Granting a financial request from Telespond Senior Services, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby grant the funding request for Telespond Senior Services Incorporated to provide a county match to their PennDOT Vehicle Acquisition Grant in the amount of not to exceed $20,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that Lackawanna County will provide a county match of up to $20,000 towards a van that was awarded to Telespond from the PennDOT Vehicle Acquisition Grant Program through the United States Department of Transportation to assist in transportation needs for our seniors who utilize Telespond services. So I believe the van was roughly a little above $70,000, so this would be the match that they need to be able to have that van for our seniors' years.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Brenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And resolution 220194.
Approving a contract extension, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board, to hereby extend the purchase of additional services agreement with EQUIS Workforce Solutions under the Transition and Transitional Assistance for Needy Families Grant, the TANF Grant, until such time that the original amendment agreement is fully expended or no later than August 31, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
I need to get you a chair.
I think so.
Well, it's almost over.
It's almost over. This is the last one. Okay, this resolution states that the county, on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, is amending an agreement with EQUIS Workforce Solutions to extend the data payroll services from June 30, 2022 to when funds are exhausted. The original agreement allows for an amendment of these services, so this is just an amendment to extend it.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220195.
Accepting the quote of the CDW, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the quote from CDW Government for Networking and Security Upgrades at a price of $2,277,633.26. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our IT Director, Mr. Mike Brown.
Mike. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a phase one of two to actually strengthen up the county's infrastructure. We're hoping to use the actual infrastructure grant, but for right now, due to pricing and everything, it's going to escalate quickly, so we're using ARPA funds to actually pay for this first wave. Hopefully, the state will actually pass the infrastructure fund, so we can actually use it to continue to revamp the county and strengthen it before the next election.
Anybody have any questions for Mike? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 220197.
Authorizing a bidder's registration fee. It's the resolution of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorizing the imposition of a bidder's registration fee for all county real estate tax sales, whereas the governor signed into law Act 33 of 2021 on June 20, 2021, which amends the PA real estate tax sale law, and whereas Section 501(c) of the Act allows for the imposition of a registration fee for all bidders at a county tax sale. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the imposition of a $35 registration fee for all bidders at the county tax sale. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 3, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Tax Claim Director, Ms. Barb Liddy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
On June 30, the General Assembly passed a new law. Under this law, the Bureau is required to provide a list of completed applications received under Section 502(a) to all municipalities within the county at least five days prior to an upset sale or a judicial sale for vetting of the applicant for delinquencies and code violations. In recognition of the additional work to process and monitor bidder registration, this law authorizes us to charge a fee for extra work put on the Tax Claim Bureau. I've contacted several tax claim bureaus across the state. I compared it to most of the Class III or Class IV, and the charges range from $25 to $100. It is quite a process now that we're vetting all this registration. There's like eight steps to the bidder, from when they walk in the door till we hand them a bidder number. We have to prepare an Excel spreadsheet. We range between 200 and 300 bidders. I talked to other counties, some counties that charge 20, 25, they may get 30 bidders. So we average, like I said, between 200 and 300, depending on the sale that we're having and the amount of properties that we have for sale. So this resolution's approving a $35 bidder registration fee for the county for upset sale and judicial sales.
And many of the people will go through the process and then not show up for the sale.
That's what happens, Commissioner, people from out of town come in, they sign up, we go through all this. It's a great process. I also have set up an email chain with all other tax claim bureaus in the state, which we're not required to do, but we are sharing lists. So we're checking each other's list, because the law does state they can't have delinquencies in the Commonwealth. And this is really helping municipalities that we sell homes to, people that don't have any violations. They were bouncing from county to county. They were buying here, having delinquencies over here. So now we're all checking on each other, which is great, because we want good bidders.
Do you think 35 is enough?
I do. I, it's hard to, you know, it's a busy time for the office. I think 35 is fine.
Anybody have any questions?
You can always raise it.
You can always adjust that figure, too.
Right.
Anybody have any other questions for Barb? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
First guy up here.
Always around.
What do you think about that? First Italian-American, first offspring, right? Come from the biggest family in Madisonville. Raised on a farm, walked to school two miles a day.
Yeah, both, uphill both ways.
Right, no, no, I'm telling you, it's different now, right? And when they had show and tell, I took the horse to school one day, right, Joe? I walked right through the hallway and out the other door, right? The first grade was right here. I was 11 years old at the time, right? Then I ended up on a Parkino school board. Isn't that amazing? One of these days, I'm going to run for Commissioners. Because I think, I think if you shut the back door, you could run the store a little better. There's too much dead weight. Things got to change, it was going to get worse. Now, what else was I going to tell you?
Your name.
My name? Mr. Ralph Dominique Dormey. My father came from the old country. Raised a big family here, worked in a mine, was raised on a farm. But you know, we used to have 40 farmers there years ago, right? You don't have nothing now, we have no industry or nothing. But I got a $1,700 county tax to pay, and I was trying to get you guys up there for three years. It's only a mile or so from the Wayne County line. We have no industry. What am I going to get for my $1,700 a year? Is there anything I can get? How about, how about an easy job? In fact, they call me Mister, probably the oldest guy in the room here, 83 years old, right? Now, what else I want to tell you? I got most of it down here, right? I, how about, you got any input to the Department of DOT? The road from Moscow to County Line there is shot. I know they're working on 590 over there, even though it's still in Lackawanna County. I mean, you knock the hell out of your pickup or your car running on the road there, it's terrible. I asked them the other day, when they were working there, and they had about seven trucks there and a little blacktop, and all this payment we're making, and the guy said they're not going to blacktop it. But then I heard the same night that somebody, they were going to blacktop it. That road is so bad, isn't funny, over there by the dam?
Yeah.
But that should be done, and the 690 should be done. I mean, the roads are terrible. I don't want to miss nothing there, Jerry, you know, I don't want to miss nothing with you guys.
Those are state roads, and we're, you know, I understand.
I just want you to know that we came from the biggest family in Madisonville here, and it was like moving into South Chicago there, and it was tough running. You know what I mean? You did all your chores, you walked to school, the plumbing was outside, everything. You had no problem. We had a, we had a captain for, for a father, you know what I mean? Worked in a mine, worked, worked the farm with the horses. I don't know what else I want to tell you, but I wanted to let you know that we've been here for 100 years. It was like moving into a place where you didn't belong, because there was none of us here, you know what I mean? Right, Polly? Tell your father hello.
I will.
I'm going to keep an eye on all of you guys.
All right. Thanks, Ralph.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us.
I'm glad you found the way up here. I'm Ralph's brother Joe. And they might call me a senior citizen, but I'm the oldest teenager in Madisonville, don't forget it. Well, I'm concerned about my property tax, but I got my bill several months ago, X amount of dollars, and then a week later, I get another one. Guard that first one, pay this one, which was $400 more. You know, I paid for the house years ago, I built the, and I probably paid over $200,000 in property taxes through the years, maybe more. But now it seems like I'm paying rent to live in my own house, and that's exactly what I think it is. But Scranton, don't worry about the county up in here. We're Lackawanna. It seems like they're all concerned about the general area around Scranton raising taxes, parking meters too, like they went overboard with them. Used to be able to park in Scranton, anywhere on Lackawanna, Wyoming, whatever, and walk to the stores. It's not better, it's worse.
Sure it is.
That's, I feel it.
No one's going to disagree with you, Joe.
But where's, where's the cutoff on the property tax?
Well, it, it's like, most of your tax isn't the county's private. We're just the one that issues the bill.
Don't they have any consideration for senior citizens that are barely getting by? And they want to keep jacking it up?
There are programs, yes.
What programs could we get on? I was born here, me and my twin brother on the farm. Where do I get after 80?
All right.
I forgot to tell you, there was only 12 in our family.
Only 12?
There's a, there's a, through the tax claim bureau, an elderly deferral program, but there are eligibility requirements, and where can they get information on that, Barb?
My office, tax claim bureau.
Or on-
Barb, can you just tap them into the microphones for the people at home?
I'm going to ask you guys one thing there. I'd like to interrupt, but, what did you do with the, anybody find the key yet?
You had to go there. The, Lackawanna County has a, I think we might have talked about it in my office, about the elderly, the elderly extension program. And what that program does is helps the elderly with their taxes. Now, your taxes won't change, okay? The income level is under $35,000.
I used to make 10 years ago, I make nothing now. I'll bring you my bill down next week, over $1,700.
All right. And what that is, what happens is you pay the taxes that you can afford, okay? You won't have to worry ever about being in a sale.
Can I interrupt you a minute?
Sure.
If the steamboat whistle caused a nickel, I couldn't afford the echo.
Okay.
You have to produce certain doc, you have to produce certain documentation. Ralph, you have to produce certain documentation, so if you want us to mail you the application so that you don't have to make two trips, so that you can bring with you what you need, we could do that, just-
Send me anything that's free.
Just leave me your address, I'll have Shannon put one, the pretty girl right there in the black hair and a bun, give her your, your address, and I'll have one mailed up to you. Because you'll have to produce certain documents, rather than taking two trips.
Well, I, I was trying to hide, but they fly over with the pictures, now they know where I live, I didn't want to really give it out.
Life has changed, Ralph.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Wallace?
You got a trip me already, old man.
That's great.
Morning, Commissioners. Bob Wallace, Scranton. It's kind of funny to see these two characters here. With Joe, I bought him a brand-new truck. He was driving it, and I said, "Okay, Joe, we have 80 new Peterbilts coming in that I bought. I want you to take a new Peterbilt." He said, "If I got to take a new Peterbilt, I quit." I still have his truck sitting in the yard from, to this day, waiting for him to get his butt back and go back to work. He's one of the best drivers I ever had.
And his father bought him a fresh truck going, and then he stole it down on Long Island.
We go back a long time in the industry. But getting on a serious note, and I'm going to bring up where I left off. Commissioner Dominic, you made a statement in the paper, "Consider the Source," when I made comments. Could you kind of elaborate what you meant by that?
I didn't make the comment in the newspaper, I made the comment at the meeting.
Yeah, whatever. You made the meeting that you said "Consider the Source."
Okay.
When I had made comments requesting from you information, you said "Consider the Source."
With regard to your insults, I said "Consider the Source." I, I'm not going to get into an argument with you. I mean, if you want to beat me like a pinata, knock yourself out, but I, I really have no comment about, you know, I'm not going to respond to your, to the negativity and the insults. I could tell you that I understand that you filed what, right to knows, I don't know anything about that, but I do know, I, I've never been convicted of a crime, I've never had anything expunged. You did bring that up at the last time. I don't know why you feel the need to come at me the way you are. It's your right, but I'm, I'm, I don't want to comment, I don't want to be negative and I don't want to be rude.
Well, Commissioner, one thing about me, I don't play games, I don't-
You don't mince words, I get it.
Exactly. Okay, I'm dealing with the city police right now.
I know.
Charging me with something from a neighbor next door.
So you, more than anyone, knows that not everything people say is true when you're innocent until you're proven guilty.
That's right. And I have a sign, I have a signed order from Judge Berace saying nobody could do what they're doing, and I have the city next door trying to stop me from using an easement that's needed, and I've been using it for over 30 years. That's not for today. The reason I'm here today is, as Commissioners, you're all under oath from the day you are sworn in.
Well, we, we've taken oath.
Yeah, you're taking oath.
Like you're not under oath, like you're in court, but you've taken oath to-
Well, it's pretty much that-
I understand.
When we ask questions of a Commissioner here, it's our right to ask a question, and we're entitled to an answer. When I asked you the question when I was here regarding, were you ever arrested by the Dunmore Police and taken to the county prison, is what I asked you. And we, as citizens in the city and the county, have that right to know this. There was a police report, I filed a right to know, go and get an answer. It was said that you were taken there, all's I look is-
That I was what in there?
You were taken to the county jail by the Dunmore Police for an incident that took place in Dunmore. That record is not, so I'm asking you that if you're under an oath-
Well, you know, again, that, that's something that happened- Well, you know, again, that, that's something that happened.
Nineteen ninety-five, I was twenty-one years old.
It doesn't make a difference, Jerry.
I understand, Bob, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue that. Anybody else have anything?
No, no, the reason I'm bringing that issue up, Jerry, is where's the key? The issue about the key that we haven't heard.
I have the key in my possession, and I, but I'm not commenting on the key. I, I can't do it. We're going into budget season, and, and, you know, we, we had a six million dollar projected deficit. I think it was reduced by maybe a little under three million. So, we're still operating at a deficit, so we really need to figure out a way to generate income and decrease expenses. So I wanna just focus on that. I'm also trying to focus on a relief program for people who are negatively affected by reassessment. We're also supposedly getting our opioid funds at some point over, you know, this month or next month. So I wanna work, I'm on the board for the Department of Health, I wanna work with Barb Durkin from Drug and Alcohol, and Bill Browning from the Department of Health, and try to offer, um, services that aren't already being offered to people suffering with substance abuse and addiction issues.
I'm with you a hundred percent, Commissioner, on all that. And I understand all the other issues, we're all busy people.
I'm just saying that, no, that's not what I'm saying. I, I like being busy. What I'm saying is, not that I'm too busy to deal with it, what I'm saying is I wanna focus on positive, positive things to improve.
So the simple answer to the question, who gave you the key to the jail that started all this controversy?
And I said seventy-two times.
That we're spending thousands of dollars, the taxpayers' money, to find out what the hell's going on.
I, I, I'm not gonna comment. I already answered it twenty-five thousand times, I don't recall, and I'm not gonna say something that I don't remember just to satisfy somebody.
That's your choice, that's up to them to take there. Jerry, one more thing I wanna give you. I know you're with Bill Gahan, the former council president, who was instrumental in putting the signs up for Joe Biden all over the city, and everything else that changed that, making a fool out of all of us that should've been on a referendum. We're patronizing this idiot that's destroying our country. But you were Gahan, just so for your own edification, I have filed a federal lawsuit against Bill Gahan for the violation of the rules of the council. And I'm gonna do everything in my power through the court system to see that Bill Gahan never takes a seat as a dictator again. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, young man.
Morning Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jerry Skolweski. I'm a resident of Dixon City, and I'm also a teacher in the Scranton School District.
Please say your last name.
First name is Jerry with a J.
What grade do you teach?
I teach eleventh grade government, and I teach law to seniors. So, on a weird note, all three of your pictures are on my classroom wall, cause I teach my students who you are. So, the reason I'm here is to say thank you to a lot of people who are on my list. About a year ago, I got involved with a group called the American Exchange Project. And it's run by a gentleman by the name of David McCullough III out of Massachusetts. So if you know the name McCullough as in the history books, this is his grandson. He started the project, which is trying to get students from around the country to exchange with other students around the country. So instead of doing foreign exchange with foreign countries, they should get to know our country first. So, by bringing high school graduates to our town, and he created forty cities, or he's got forty cities participating around the country. So this year, we sent three students, two students went to Dodge City, Kansas, one went to Sheridan, Wyoming. And then we brought three students here from Jackson, Mississippi, and from Dodge City, Kansas, who from June twenty-fourth, twenty-third, sorry, July twenty-third to July thirtieth, spent a week here in Scranton and in Lackawanna County, okay? Back in February, I had a meeting with Jason Cavulich, Jane Rissy, Maureen Duffy, Maureen McGuigan, who were unbelievably accessible and helpful in creating a week-long program for those students when they came here. So if you read the paper last Saturday, there was an article about those students and their week here. My job was to organize their week, and along with my good friend Mike Frownfelker, who teaches in the Stroudsburg Area School District, who lives in Westside, was our tour guide, okay? So he helped the kids get around, okay? I need to thank, if you don't mind, Wayne Hiller from the Trolley Museum, Bill McCarthy from Steamtown, and our tour guide at the coal mine, and I don't know his name, but he was phenomenal. The tour guide from the trolley was exceptional. Water Park, Tyler Crawford, and Brenda Sacco, it's nice to see you. We've, we've emailed each other a lot. From Lackawanna County Historical Society, Sarah, Lenny, and Ella, who gave a tremendous ghost tour around the city of Scranton. The Cultural Center, Deb Peterson and Claire Ferry, who gave us a tour and gave tickets to the students to see a show. The students also had to do a service project, so we got to do Friday in the Park, this past Friday, with Sarah Mirage, Miragelia, I'm not sure, I apologize, and Lauren Fitzgerald. The University of Scranton, Julie Cohen, Carol Madachi, and their intern Olivia were exceptional in helping us create a week-long program. All of those people gave their time, their energy, went above and beyond to give those kids and our kids from Scranton a wonderful experience here, and to show off not just Scranton but Lackawanna County. And all of those people, and our host families, Ann Connell, Stacy, and Erin Neiber, of whom, were phenomenal. And I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank all those people, they deserve a round of applause. And next year, David McCullough already said, he goes, "We can't wait to come back to Scranton and to bring more students and to show off our county." And to all of you, I say thank you to all of these people, they deserve it, and their names should be recognized, and that's why I'm here. So thank you all very much, you have some wonderful people who do some great things and go above and beyond, and I can't thank you enough.
Where do you teach this, you say you teach law to the seniors?
I teach at Scranton High School.
It, it's part of the high school?
No, this whole program has nothing to do with it.
No, no, I'm talking about the senior, I, I'm interested in the fact that you, well, I'm interested in all of what you said. I am interested in what, you said you teach eleventh grade government.
Yes.
And then you teach law to seniors.
Yes.
So, where do you do that?
At Scranton High School.
That's, it's, it's a, I didn't know that they offered a program such like, like that.
Uh, yeah, law's been there a long time, but I rewrote the curriculum and made it better. So I met the guy who wrote the textbook, and I told him I rewrote his textbook, and he went, "Okay." So, um.
And I hope the picture you have of me isn't from the Times, cause they take really bad pictures of me.
It's whatever pictures, I apologize, whatever pictures.
If you need one, I'll send you one.
You're more than welcome to do that, so.
I would love that.
What I do with my government.
I'm trying to sit here like, smile the whole time, this guy to my, to my right taking my pictures.
Wherever I can get my pictures from, they come from the internet, that's where I get them from.
Oh, Lord.
If you want, you should see the pictures I got from the judges, so no offense, they're on my wall too.
I'm not photogenic to begin with, you know?
I teach all my students from local government how the school board works, all the way to federal law. And this year, I'll be doing it backwards, cause I'll start with federal government, because we have the federal election and state election in November, and I'll work my way back to school board the county.
It's interesting, I didn't, I didn't know that.
And you're more than welcome to stop by and teach my class someday if you wanna come over, so.
That's on my bucket list, to teach a class.
Come on over, I'll, I'll have room for you in the studio.
How do I reach you? Will you leave your information with Shannon?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So, but again, thank you all, and to all of your people who helped us. It was a tremendous week, and I can't thank you enough. Please read the article in the paper, the kids had a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the township has responsibility for the township roads, but they can't touch the state. Now, these roads are terrible. State roads, six ninety and Aberdeen, and Reservoir. Now, on the corner of Reservoir and Aberdeen, there's a house there that says, "F. Joe Biden." Now, all the years I've been in the army, there was a lot of officers in that, that wanted to make a pip on a, you know, what. But whether you like the lieutenant or the captain or all, you have to show respect. Now, whether you like Joe Biden or Donald Trump, okay, should show some respect. But they have that sign there, now, how will we go about getting that the hell out?
You probably can't.
I told them about it in the township over and over, and there's little kids across the street. I said, "If I lived across the street, you know what I'd do with that guy? That's no way to deal with."
Well, anyway, well, that's.
What does it say?
F. Biden. If you don't like him, fine, but bad people shouldn't be involved in things like that, that's terrible to do that.
One thing very, this is, we have roughly fifteen tractor trailer loads of household cleaning supplies that I'm donating out throughout the county and around the area. And I wanna make that announcement here, that anybody hears it, call my office, five seven oh, three four six, seven six five nine. We donated a bunch out yesterday to local fire departments, first responders, police departments, all up through the Mid Valley. It's free, come down and take as much as you want, and it's for everybody else, and it's from Bob Wallace, Toppers and Truckers for America. And I think our nee, our area needed it, so I dealt with one of the companies I've been involved with. And she said, "Bob, I have twenty-two trailer loads, if you could take them, you got them." They're all on my trailers, so.
Jason Cavulich, who handles the area agency on aging.
I'm sorry?
Jason Cavulich, who's the director of the area agency on aging, for, for the elderly.
Whoever wants it.
I'll, I'll let him know.
Whoever needs it throughout the county, individuals in the city or the county. We wanted to donate it out last night at the police thing downtown, because of this incident going on. The lieutenant down there said, "We can't have you do it." Which I think sucked, because a lot of people could've had a lot of free stuff in this time of need for everybody. And I don't think that should've been a purpose or a part of his reasoning to the prime people in the city. But that's why I'm bringing it out today. It's all about us one way or the other, it's our community.
Yep.
And whatever we can do to make it better for our people, we wanna do it. So that's out there for everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. No one else? Commissioners, other business, Mr. Schermack?
I'm, just to piggyback on what Bob said, I know he did reach out to Camp Freedom. They take care of a lot of our vets, first responders, so I know he'll be in contact with you.
Whatever they need, they'll take a home trailer, we'll take a trailer to them.
I'm sure he'll, he'll, he'll be very appreciative.
And we're sending a couple trailers to Kentucky, shipping down there.
But looking at the Antedore Boys, Mr. Wallace, Dave Hahn, Frank Curgirio, you know, thank you to our service, our veterans and our service members for all that you've done, and thank you, you know, thank you for your service. And your aggravation. Just kidding. National Night Out, went to Moscow last night, it was a nice event. Tonight's Archbald, if anybody's interested, I think that starts around six o'clock. Somebody asked about our county, oh, with the, thanks for our county, we do have great county people. Hardworking, a lot of departments, they do a great job. So it's nice to hear someone from the outside recognizing them as well. Budget stuff, you know, I've been in contact with Mary Jo Granahan, our budget director. You know, we're gonna revisit some of the questions I had last year, you know, I, you know, I had a list of about nine million dollars worth of potential savings. Our previous CFO didn't have time to discuss it with me, so hopefully this year we can, you know, get on track with that. I'm working on it. There's a lot going on, you know, we're very, very busy. This is, it's, it, there's a lot that goes on in the county, every department, it's a tremendous amount of work. I, I say it all the time, I go to work early every day. These distractions that we're dealing with now, prison distractions, the scandals going on, it's very, very disheartening to me, and I'm very concerned. You know, we have a lot to do, and it's a huge, huge distraction. So I'm gonna say it here, if, if Commissioner Dominic has any, any knowledge or involvement in disappearing prison records or anything going on, I'm, I'm asking for her resignation. Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Dominic?
Chris, first off, I had nothing to do with any of that.
We're not discussing it now.
Second of all, just because you show up to work doesn't mean you do anything. And third of all, I never had any comment, any conversation with you when I talked to you several times last year about the budget. I spent almost a month going through line by line by line by line, line item by line item of each department, and came up with, came up with 1.5 million.
Like myself, you are not a budget expert. We have budget experts.
I came up with 1.5 million dollars of savings, and then once they were gone, me and Jerry went through them, we agreed on 1.2 million dollar savings. So, I'm not a budget expert, but I'm an attorney and I have a brain in my head, and, you know, I did the work. So you can make the complaints, but you gotta put in the work. So you could say that you come every day, that doesn't mean that you're doing anything to address your concerns. You're concerned about our most vulnerable citizens with reassessment. Have you done anything to, to, to alleviate that possible hardship on them? No, but I, I, I've met with people that.
Yes, I voted no for the reassessment.
Well, I, well, guess what, it went through, so it is what it is. So I met with the director, and we have a relief program though, so.
And you got a huge fight going on right now, so.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the reassessment goes, it's something, it's over fifty years, there's three counties that were left in the, in the, in the state, sixty-seven counties were one of the last three. We would've been forced by the, the courts to reassess, it's necessary. It's not gonna hurt people like they believe. It's been a, a political football forever. Basically, elected officials were afraid to do it for fear of losing an election.
Can you ask me something there and not interrupt you?
No, no, not yet. But, the bottom line is, it's not gonna hurt people like they, that people believe, it's a fear tactic. It, it's necessary, it's gonna actually end up helping people, and it's necessary. It's a matter of fairness. Do you wanna pay his taxes? Do you wanna pay her taxes? No, you wanna pay yours, that's it. And that's what happens in this system the way it is now. It had to be done, it's absolutely necessary.
I think it's so stigmatizing, because it hasn't been done in fifty-four years.
And, and, and again, it's political cowardice.
And Jerry notified me of something I didn't know, that some states require counties to reassess every so often. I didn't know that.
Yes.
Pennsylvania does not, so Jerry and I discussed potentially putting together an ordinance requiring our county to.
Our state, actually, you'd have to.
No, I think we need to do it by ordinance, right? Well, Frank is looking into it, as to whether or not we can put some, some sort of ordinance together, legislation, so that it doesn't fall by the wayside in the future for another fifty years.
Okay, and Bob, you were gonna say something?
Ralph.
Ralph.
No, Bob was.
I wanted to.
Oh, Ralph, you wanna say something, okay.
You know, you know, you talk about somebody reassessed or whatever. A few years ago, I had a shed, eighteen by twenty, no floor in it. When I had a menagerie with a couple of ponies and stuff for the kids, right? Nothing in there, somehow, somebody turns that in, comes up and wants a sesame for $10,000 on that shed. Now where the heck does that come from? The county. Somebody down there or somebody up here tells you they don't like the neighbor, and they wanna say something? And then somebody, and the guy's name was Mr. Booth, like the guy that shot Lincoln, right? Nice old man. Finally got it knocked down to a thousand dollars with only a shed, now how do you go about that?
Well, and, and again, how they know about it, we don't, we can't tell that, but if, once it's, your property is reassessed, it'll be set fairly, that's the idea of reassessment.
I told you I was born over there, me and my twin brother on that farm, and rough, rough, rough. It was like moving in a neighborhood in a pelican, okay? Somebody comes around and went to check out my measurements and everything. I went to Harmony Hills twice when I was on the school board. They don't even plant a flower, okay? There might be four ranch-type homes, the other ones are big. Where's all that money going from? I have a ranch-type house, right? Now where's all the money going from? But yet they keep writing taxes and tax system. It should be on a referendum, everything, and have the majority rule, the majority, not the majority of the minority, like we've got nine districts, or nine judges, they're gonna dictate the nine, three hundred million people. Oh, that ain't right. They got their own agenda and they're not thinking about anybody else. And I hope you guys think a little different too, because we got two, where are we going? Things gotta be straightened out a little better.
Again, this is, this is above our.
I'll never give up until I'm dead, Jerry.
That's okay.
You're the guy that rules, don't tell you.
I love to listen to you, actually.
Jerry, with the assessment, and they give you your assessment, your tax, is that appealable? Do we have a.
Yes, absolutely.
If you don't like your assessment, you can appeal.
Didn't they say that it'll be done in the spring?
And you know, if you're trying to keep in mind that your taxes are such.
When you're trying, always you try.
No, no.
I think they said the assessment's gonna be done in the spring of 2025, and then the appeal period will end in November of 2025.
Yeah.
And then the taxes will go out in 26, did I get that right?
That's what I'm trying to get at, in other words, even though you're getting a reassessment, it's not taking your voice away. To be able to go, give the assessment.
It's just a logical thing to do.
So you still have your rights, and I think people need to understand that, it's not a slam dunk.
Yes, no.
No, what, what happens is, right after the assessment is completed and the new tax bills go out, there is a period that's included under the law, I don't know if it's ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, whatever that period is, it may even be as, as much as six months. Everyone, everyone who gets reassessed, which will be every property owner, will have the opportunity, if they desire, to take an appeal to that assessment. You don't have to wait to the normal appeal period, you'll be able to take the appeal consistent with the reassessment at that time.
Does that cost you an application fee, though?
No, no, no. And then what we'll do as well, because anytime you do a reassessment, obviously, there will be a flux of, or influx of appeals. So we'll set up additional hearing boards at that time, consistent with the statute, so that we're able logistically to address all the appeals in a timely manner.
So there's no application fee?
No.
You're gonna receive a data mailer.
Oh, I'm sorry, what were?
After they visit your property. As well. So you could call and discuss the question.
The reason for the fee in this particular case today is because you would have two hundred people, and you would, the office would have to go through the trouble of vetting them, and then when you actually got to the sale, there'd only be sixty people showing up.
I'm not talking about the sale.
Right, no, I understand, but no.
About the assessment on property, is there an application fee to request a hearing?
There is not, and, and to your question, because I don't know if the public can hear your question. So the question was, is there an application fee relative to someone who wants to file an appeal to their reassessment? And the question is, no, there is not.
Jerry, one more quick question.
Put my hand up first.
Put your hand up. I'm gonna fire you. Could we put a referendum on about the Biden signs?
I don't know the answer to that. And again, that's not what, that's not what this is, this is a Commissioner's meeting.
It's in the county.
Okay.
And we just want the voice of the people to have something to say.
Then again.
Not five dictators on Scranton Council and the mayor.
You may be able to, Bob, I don't know the answer, Ralph, what do you have?
What I'm gonna say is, we know the mess that Mr. O'Malley got us in, he got that stored on there, we should've never had it.
You're right, I voted against it.
And, and you can't, I mean, if you go down there to.
Jerry loves that building. Jerry loves the government center, he loves, Jerry loves the government center.
And as far as, me, I'm not going for no politics, no, no way, but it should've never been changed, spruce green.
Yeah, again, this, that's.
But Scranton way should've been okay, but that's a little bit too much.
Nothing in our control.
As far as that council there, you know, there, them guys.